The auditor is required to express an opinion on whether the government complied with laws, regulations, and provisions of contracts or grant agreements that could have a direct and material effect on each major federal or state program. For the record, the county received an unmodified or clean opinion. In addition to the CAFER, you have been provided with one letter. This letter is known as the Statement of Auditing Standards Number 114 Letter entitled Communication with Governing Boards. This letter is required by auditing standards generally accepted in the United States and discusses our firm's responsibilities, the county's significant accounting policies, and the county's accounting estimates. I would encourage you to take a look at this letter at your convenience. And lastly, I'd just like to thank Vicki and her staff in the Finance Department for all her assistance that she provided and they provided this year during our audit. At this point, I'm going to turn it over to Vicki and for the rest of the presentation.
Okay, the slide that is shown is a summary of the general fund. It shows the original and final budget, actual balances, and the variance between the final budget and actual revenue and expenditures. Details of this can be found on page E5 within the Fund Financial Statements section of the CAFER. I need to take a break from my slide and say that the financial report is now on our website, on the county website, under Finance Department Audit. So this version is so you can, the public can look at it electronically. As you can see, highlighted in yellow on the slide, the general funds expenditures and other financing sources exceeded revenue and other financing sources by $1.37 million. In other words, there was a loss. This loss, when applied to the beginning restated fund balance of $115.6 million, results in an ending fund balance of $114.1 million, which is highlighted in green. This slide displays the five different categories of fund balance that make up total fund balance of $103.2 million. As noted on the slide, this amount does not include the county school fund. Fund balance categories include non-spendable, restricted, committed, assigned, and unassigned. There is no flexibility within the non-spendable, restricted, and committed categories. Assigned fund balances are funds set aside for, I mean, I'm sorry, set aside by the board for purposes of future use. A total of $41.4 million has been assigned and $32.6 million is unassigned. The unassigned amount represents 10.23% of fiscal year 2016 expenditures. This slide shows the trend in spendable fund balance over the last 10 years. Cumberland County policy requires a general fund unassigned fund balance of no less than 10%. That is shown in the purple, with the purple line. It's been stable, remaining above the 10%, just slightly above the 10% set by policy over all years shown. Policy also requires combined assigned and unassigned fund balance be a minimum of 15% of total expenditures. The green line shows this percentage and compliance over all years shown. For fiscal year 2016, general fund actual revenue summary breakdown is shown here in this slide by revenue category. As you can see at the top, ad valorem taxes represent well over half of the total general fund revenues. The total is there on the side, $315,227.40. General fund actual expenditures are shown on this slide. Education has the highest representation of the general fund expenditures, followed by social services and public safety. The top three make up over two-thirds of general fund expenditures. Details of the general fund revenues and expenditures can be found in the Major Funds section of the CAFER, pages H2 through H7. Before we move on to the recommendation, I would like to thank the Board of Commissioners, Management, and Cherry Beckett for working with us and being understanding of the fact that we ran behind schedule in completing and presenting the audit. We did implement new financial software during fiscal year 2016, and staff worked extremely hard and long hours to accomplish this and stay on top of all other duties, including this audit. For all their work, their hard work and dedication, I do want to recognize the lead of our audit. It's Bob Tucker. He's right here in the audience. He is CPA. And in addition to Bob, the other professional staff within finance making significant contributions were Todd Hathaway, who's also a CPA, Kelly Autry, Yvonne Mendez, and Carol St. Louis. I'd also like to recognize the internal audit staff of Tammy Gillis and Renee Gleaton, who assisted in auditing alongside Cherry Beckett. Combined with other financial staff throughout the county and the print shop who put the report together, it truly is a team effort to create the report. Finally, we do request your acceptance of the fiscal year 2016 comprehensive annual financial report, and if you have questions of either Linda or I, we'll be glad to answer them.
Mr. Keith?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Vicki, if you can go back a slide or two. We talked about two things. One was the health percentages. Does that include, tell me what's included in that number?
Is this the slide that you're referring to?
Yeah, I might ask about this one, then I'm going to go to the next one before that one.
Okay, so that's public health? That's the Department of Public Health?
Only public health.
Correct.
Okay, and if you, wait, before you go to that one, go back to the other one.
Okay, sorry.
We had mental health on there of $5,300,000.
$328,000, uh-huh.
And then the slide before that, we had mental health at 2.3 million. If you go back, it might have been before that one. Here it is, two, three. Yeah, 2.3.
The assignment?
Right. Yeah, so I think everyone knows that, most people up here know that mental health is going to be a challenge in the upcoming years. Tell me how this is representative of the difference between the $5 million and the 2.3 million?
The amount in this slide, assigned for mental health, is the amount that we have remaining that was assigned from when Cumberland County had mental health, a mental health department.
Right.
And so over, since, I believe it was in 2012, since that divestiture, the funds have decreased to this point.
Right.
Okay, so then compared to this slide, our actual costs last, during fiscal year 16, were $5.3 million.
What my takeaway from that is our safety net, or not safety net, we don't have any more money left in the kitty for mental health.
Not specifically for mental health, that's correct.
Right, so we're going to be looking at 5.3, where it was subsidized a bit by the fund balance previously, right?
That's true.
So next budget year, we're going to have to come up with another $2.7 million, pretty much to continue to provide mental health services at the level that we are.
At that same level, yes, sir.
Yeah, okay, thank you very much.
Anyone else have any questions? That was for presentation only, so we will receive that report. I don't think there's any action required. Thank you so very much for that report, and thank you for what you do for the county. Thank you very much.
Sorry. Thank you.
We'll move to the consent agenda. Are there any items to be removed from the consent agenda? If not, I'll call for a motion in a second.
So moved.
Second. It's been moved and approved, moved to second it as to the consent agenda. All those in favor?
Unanimous.
County Manager, Ms. Cannon?
Yes, sir. Item number four is our public hearings. Under the uncontested cases, we have case piece 16-48. Mr. Lloyd?
Yes, ma'am. The first case is a little over three and a half acres from CP Plan Commercial to A1A. A little over a year ago, they requested rezoning to CP. They received it, decided they didn't really want that rezoning, so they're going back to their original A1A. There was no opposition at the planning board, and I don't believe there's any opposition tonight. The planning board recommended approval.
Are there any questions? If not, I'll open the public hearing. Ask the clerk if there are any speakers.
I'm sorry, Chairman Adams, there are no speakers.
With there being no speakers, I'll close the public hearing. I'll call for a motion and a second on the first motion. Ms. Counsel.
Mr. Chairman, I move to find the request for rezoning consistent with the 2030 Growth Vision Plan and any other applicable land use plan reasonable and in the public interest for the reasons stated in the recommendations of the planning staff.
Second the motion.
It's been moved to second in discussion. If not, all those in favor?
Unanimous.
If I can get a motion on the, a second motion?
I move to approve the rezoning for A1A Agricultural District.
Second.
It's been moved in second it. All those in favor?
Unanimous. Item 4B is case piece 1701.
Yes, ma'am. This is a rezoning of two acres from R40 residential conditional use, which would allow an existing mobile home, which it has on it, to R48, which would allow the same manufactured home and others without having to go through the conditional use process. So the planning board recommended approval. There's no opposition.
Is there any discussion? If not, I will open the public hearing and ask the clerk if there are any speakers.
There are no speakers.
I'll close the public hearing, and I'll call for a motion on case P1701.
I move to find the request for rezoning consistent with the 2030 Growth Vision Plan and any other applicable land use plan reasonable and in the public interest for the reasons stated in the recommendations of the planning staff.
Second.
It's been moved in second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Unanimous.
If I can get the second motion?
I move to approve the rezoning for R48 Residential District.
Second.
Any discussion? It's been moved and properly second. All those in favor?
Unanimous.
Thank you, Mr. Lloyd. We hope you're feeling better. We see you at least up and out just a little bit there. Thank you for coming tonight. Ms. Cannon, item number five, consideration endorsement of the North Carolina Civil War History Center.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. If I could, I'd like to provide just a little bit of background. As you'll recall, the Civil War History Foundation presented a resolution at our September 1st, 2016 Finance Committee meeting. At that meeting, we did not take any action. It was recommended that funding for the Civil War History Center be considered, along with other items, in our fiscal year 2018 budget process. Recently, the foundation has asked the Board of Commissioners to again take action on financial support for the history center before the end of this month. The foundation believes there's an opportunity to secure state support if there's city support and county support by the end of this month. On December 12th, the City of Fayetteville committed to an investment of up to $7.5 million. This evening, at the dais, you've been presented with a paper copy of a proposed resolution, and in the interest of time, I'll really get down to the bottom line. Basically, the recommended resolution says that the Cumberland County Board of Commissioners does hereby resolve to endorse the Civil War History Center and will commit funding up to $7.5 million toward the project. Included in the resolution are some suggested parameters surrounding the county contribution. At this time, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Does anyone have any questions? If not, I'll call for a motion.
I'll make that motion. I'll second that.
It's been moved and properly second to accept the resolution that has been presented by the county manager in support of the proposed North Carolina Civil War Museum Center. All those in favor?
Unanimous.
All those opposed? Thank you. We'd like to thank you all for coming out. We see that you support the Civil War Museum, and I think this board does also, and the things that it brings to this community. So, Madam Manager, number six?
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, item number six is a presentation of some-
If you, we give him an opportunity, anybody that wants to kind of leave, because it'll be a lot of noise. So we'll take a moment break.
Okay, now you guys move on out now. I know y'all like to talk, but we got a meeting we got to do. Not that I'm rushing you out to do it. We have to charge you if you stay a little bit longer. I see all the- thanks for doing this. I have to get this meeting on, and need to move this meeting on.
And if I could just take one moment, I do have one of my library Board of Trustees members here. Brian, thank you so very much for coming, since I'm the liaison, and I always like to make sure we recognize my library Board of Trustees. Presentation of the preliminary Hurricane Matthew response, Ms. Cannon?
Yes, sir. I'd like to ask our Assistant County Manager Tracy Jackson to provide this presentation. Again, this is some preliminary response information. There's some more detailed information that will be provided along the way.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. What we have for you tonight is a review of the after-action report that was done with our partners in the Emergency Operations Center. So these agencies basically consist of groups such as schools, sheriff's office, EMS, PWC, Red Cross, and numerous others, approximately 19 or 20 different groups. We sent them a survey, asking them for the strengths, the areas that perhaps were challenges, and then also recommendations for improvement in the future. So I'll go through that tonight. And the first, the first issue or area that we'll talk about is strengths. So in terms of collaboration, the Emergency Operations Center operated in a unified command system. So basically, what's that, what that means for us in simple terms is that the groups that came together, put aside their self-interests and their egos in order to best serve the people in the county in a time of disaster. I will say that in mentioning the groups that participated, county fire departments were not included in this after-action review. That is a huge separate group and organization. Of course, you know the numbers that we have across the county with those different departments. We're going to include those in a second phase and bring this, that information back to you at another time. So today, we really are just focusing on the core group that was in the Emergency Operations Center and not so much field operations or outreach in terms of those hands-on departments out in the fields. So I just, I just want to clarify that before we get too much further, so. The county also, as you know, working with all these different groups and emergency services, it can be very complicated. We're fortunate to have the right people in the right places with the different agencies as far as the multi-agency coordination. We had senior leadership and elected officials in the EOC at different times. That was helpful in terms of being able to make decisions and to have the involvement and presence of those folks in order to move things along when things need to happen and to get the participation and support of the different groups that were operating in the field. We're also fortunate to have a joint information center and had the different groups of public information officers from the city and county that were also backed up with representatives from City Fire, City Police Department, and the public library. Another strength was communication. Having the Unified Joint Information Center, or JIC as it's called, allowed us to respond in a quick manner when conditions changed and emergency information needed to be distributed to citizens and also to responders. It also allowed our staff to respond to media questions and to get information in the hands of the media as quickly as possible. We had a very good use of different types of technology in terms of the different media platforms. Many of you are familiar with Code RED, which is the mass notification system that we have that notifies people through the phone system. And we also were able to, to use conference calling in a capacity that had not been previously used in terms of reaching out to fire departments, towns, and communicating large amounts of information in a short period of time, and also collecting information from those different groups that allowed us to make decisions in a more timely fashion. Access, sense, and command and decision-makers was greatly aided just by their presence in the Emergency Operations Center. If they weren't right there in the room, we knew how to get hold of them in a quick fashion through their designees or through other phone numbers accessed through different types of media. We also had the addition of a communications center in the EOC, which was really just an extension of our 911 center. This, this came in handy in terms of being able to add some different channels for radio communications back and forth to the field. Then this also helped to relieve some of the stress that was placed on our 911 center, which quickly became a burden during one period when we had numbers of, high numbers of calls coming into the 911 center. In terms of preparation, we were able to pre-plan and make many early notifications. In our situation, we took this as a potentially life-threatening situation for our citizens, and we prepared for the worst-case scenario. Even though the weather forecast had the storm moving offshore or grazing the shore or the coast of North Carolina, we went ahead and prepared as if it was going to move inland and as if we were going to have the worst case. And we were glad that we did, and in terms of that preparation, and unfortunately, the worst case did happen, and we had dire flooding. But we felt like we were really prepared in the Emergency Operations Center because of what we had done prior to the storm. In terms of internal county coordination with different departments and different agencies, we had excellent support. We had vehicles fueled, we had personnel in the right place, we had numbers of people ready to respond as needed, and we felt really good about that, that effort. In terms of external coordination with our partners, we were able to check their capabilities, verify their resources, and make sure that everything was in place when the time came. Our EOC team had actually trained and had a hurricane exercise in the spring of 2016. Just going through those motions and being able to test our skills and our preparation during that exercise, I think also contributed to some of the success that we experienced and some of the strengths that we, we identified. In terms of performance, the activation of the EOC, actually bringing in the emergency operations staff seemed to go very smoothly. Of course, we knew this was coming towards us, so we had time to plan and to put things in place. Shelter coverage by county staff was excellent. You can't say enough good things about DSS and public health in terms of the effort that they put forward and the hours that they worked and their dedication in terms of operating the shelters. Also need to recognize all the effort that went into the DSS food stamp distribution. Not only their department, but also other county departments pitched in on that. It was a very efficient and caring process, and I think that made a difference in terms of being able to get resources in the hands of folks that needed it in a timely manner. We also need to recognize our partner support from all the different agencies. You see a couple listed there. These folks were able to address issues on the fly. They executed their plans, and when it came time to change direction because of the unexpected, they were able to do that, and they went above and beyond expectations. It's normal for us to pick up the phone and call somebody and have an expectation that they're going to deliver what we need, but in most every situation, the folks that worked with us closely in the Emergency Operations Center were able to exceed our expectations and deliver way above what we expected and needed. One example of this was something that was not planned, was being able to provide fuel for EMS and county fire, and also the out-of-county swift water rescue teams that arrived and needed resources in order to be operational in the field. Now, of course, we did have some challenges, and we had some recommendations that came from that, and they're divided into four different categories. In terms of pre-event preparations and different training across the board for our folks, it has felt like that for the future, there's definitely a need for more staff in the Emergency Operations Center. We really need to have at least three positions deep in terms of being able to cover multiple shifts from multiple days. That's something that we weren't as prepared for as we would have liked to have been. So that just meant a lot of people working longer hours and longer shifts in order to cover the times in the, the operational times in the Emergency Operations Center. We also have a recommendation to bring staff from other county departments such as planning, tax, and also some of the other typically more administrative clerical departments. Provide them training in the Emergency Operations Center and help them get more comfortable with that operation so we can plug them in when needed and kind of expand the force that we have there in the Emergency Operations Center. We also had emergency management expand their media training. We felt like in the past, there was definite need for folks to understand more about the role of media in the emergency setting, how they can help us distribute information. And one of the things that we see for the future is the possibility for expanding that training to elected officials so that they can understand the Emergency Operations Center, all the things that go into its preparation and its execution and actual work that's done there in, in that room. There's also a need for understanding confidentiality issues associated with different disaster situations. Oftentimes in our shelters, the media was outside the doors and very interested in coming in and learning more about the victims and their situations. It was challenging in terms of trying to protect their confidentiality and show them some dignity, and that's something that, that we knew, know we need to work on for the future. We also had situations where post-disaster, immediately post-disaster, when we were implementing our damage assessment, that we found we needed better software than what we have, and we need better processes and planning in terms of getting out in the field and doing the actual assessment. As far as that goes, we plan to hold more drills and exercises for the employees that conduct damage assessment, look at the plans and the way that we deploy into the field to do the assessments, and we will definitely include our appraisers and our inspectors in planning and tax in order to be able to, to do that in the future. As far as the Emergency Operations Center, the facility itself, we ran into problems with the backup power systems. This was something that the city also experienced. Some of that, we think, may have been due to the, the power grid, but also because of some of the ways that our system was designed and wired. We have addressed those issues in terms of our generators. We actually had one of two generators in the law enforcement center that went down during the storm. It caused a power loss to the phone system in the 911 center. It caused a power loss to the phone system in the 911 center. Our staff-